Next level.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session of April 28th. We are going to be discussing a number of different items today. And the first kickoff is a city council kind of check-in and discussion of some of the potential APCHA regulation changes that our two APCHA reps here, John Doyle and Christine Benedetti, are going to brief the current council on and then have some discussions. Thank you. So I don't know which one if he wants to lead off or whether you need to pull up a PowerPoint or anything like that.
Since you were the member in attendance, I'd be happy to leave it up to you.
I don't have a PowerPoint. I think we could run through the packets from.
Absolutely. I took some notes. I took some notes on it, so.
All of these. Does everyone have that in their packet?
Is your mic on? Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Everyone should have the topics of discussion in their packet, which is exactly what we ran through and presented, reviewed as a PowerPoint in the APCHA meeting.
Okay.
I think the easiest thing would be to just run by each of the regulations that are under consideration.
Okay. Yeah. And again, this is in some ways for our viewing public. And if you just want to kind of start at the top of the list and go through them, that would be fine.
Okay. So the first update is the removal of retirement assets from asset calculation. APCHA had been hearing that this cap on saving discouraged people from saving for retirement. And this applies to 401Ks, IRAs, 403Bs, and 457ths. And so they are recommending a removal of all caps on retirement assets for applicants in APCHA.
Did you have any comments on that one, John?
Um. And do you want me to? Do you probably, sorry to interrupt. Do you want to know where APCHA landed on these as a board or would you, in our meeting, or would you like to discuss them first and then?
Perhaps where APCHA landed and then any of the general color or conversation that you'd like to fill in with.
Okay. This one was unanimously supported. I think people were generally in favor of the limitations that retirement, that including retirement as an asset in asset calculations were always limiting people. And so this didn't seem to pose any concerns for people on the APCHA board.
And I would add that Francie and Kelly took this back to the county commissioners and they also support this.
Okay. Did anybody discuss any sort of top end, you know, if someone had $5 million of retirement assets or inherited and therefore, you know, is there, was there any top end in which it would become a concern?
I would have to defer to Christine because again.
That did not come up.
Didn't attend that meeting.
Would specifically apply to retirement accounts?
I know. I'm just saying you can shift a lot into retirement over time, even if it's an IRA that you need to pay taxes on when you pull it out. It just seems like maybe just take that comment back to be looked at for future iterations. But there could be some top ends that we want to consider on that. You know, I wish everyone has a good retirement fund and want to build mine up a little more if I can. But you know, it's somewhat possible that there could be some exceptions to that rule and maybe considering a top end would be worthwhile.
Okay. Yeah. Other than that, what Rachel posed, I would say it's a great thing for people to have more wealth and upward mobility because it still meets the demands of the program, community and workforce. So I don't see any real issue with it.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. And the goal has, you know, or maybe there's been a thought process that if anyone really came into incredibly significant assets, they'd move out of the program and free up the unit for someone else for workforce. But, you know, I'm just saying, I think in the age we're in of billionaires, it's worth considering a top end.
Okay. Love that. The second update is to the number of times per year that APCHA collects tax information, essentially. So right now applicants are required to provide W-2s and 1099s after January 1st and then after their tax returns on April 15th. And then potentially, again, if it's a new application. So they are requesting that this is limited down to one application per year and your application is valid for the year after you apply. It decreases the burden on staff and also applicants at the same time. There was some concern on the APCHA board that, or the question was raised if this, if people could apply at the end of December in a lower tax bracket and essentially game the system, is the way it was described. Everyone came around on that. It was brought up as a question. I think my point was that you'd have to be really lucky to game the system that way because your chances of winning are not that easy.
And I think it said something about if you had changed employment, then it's.
Yes. Yeah. If you've, if you win, then you'll be required to submit your information again upon, if you win six months out from submittal, then you'd be required to provide verification again. But this just decreases the number of standardized times per year that you're submitting.
I can support that. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I want to take a half minute just to compliment the APCHA board and the APCHA staff for constantly trying to update and approve the regulations for effectiveness and efficiency and ease of administration and ease of use by the public. So I appreciate you two taking this on.
And I think this particular issue fits both of those. This does make it easier for applicant as well as for staff. And it just makes, it's just common sense to only need it to be done once a year. And I would point out that the county commissioners also support this.
Thank you.
No issues. Agreed with all the statements.
So the next two, part of, I'm new to the APCHA board, but my understanding is that one of the goals is to try to eliminate the barrier to entry for people or reduce the barrier to entry for ownership or new applicants. And so the next two, I believe, were put forth to do that. One is to eliminate the $5 bid fee per unit.
That when you enter a lottery?
Yeah, you have to pay $5 every time you enter a lottery. So if you're applying for 10 houses a year or 10 units per year, that's 50 bucks. And then the second, well, let's, we'll do number three first. So this, APCHA estimated this would reduce revenue by about $6,000 per year. We can address that later on in the regulations on how to make up for that in a different area of.
That or it could become part of our 2026 budget costs that we split with the county for administrative fees. And so I think that that would be another way to skin that cat unless there's some fee that people think is very much below where it should be to make up that 6,000.
Luckily, it's one of the lower numbers that will cross this table.
Yeah, you can imagine that. That's very good. Thank you.
I imagine there's no issue with over applicants. Like, it's not, it's not a bad thing if people apply to things that they don't think they would want anyway, correct?
No.
So then, yeah, this mean, this is a great change then. If there's no adverse effect from people applying to now.
Yeah, I thought about overapplying myself a little bit. But the only real downside would be should they be the winner and the, you know, they have to go then more thoroughly through their packet and then they decline the unit and then they go to the second bidder and decline the unit, go to third. But it's hard to imagine people would want to go through that.
Agreed. Just making sure, yeah.
Okay. Number four is a capital improvement fee removal. Right now, you have to submit a $50 bid to apply for a capital improvement.
To your unit?
Yes. And so this would just eliminate that.
Now, I can understand eliminating the bid price fee. Did they have an estimated budget on that? Of what it would cost the APCHA budget?
I don't remember going over, I don't remember hearing that. One of the ideas, which is to increase, which one is it? Just increase the bid fee overall. And maybe that's not actually on here. But the idea was.
Your initial bid fee?
Your initial bid's fee is $50 per year right now. And they didn't have a specific number. I think $60 was thrown out. But increasing that initial bid fee, I believe the true cost of the bid is 100 and somewhere between $125 or $150 or processing an application. And so increasing that to meet the true cost of application, somewhere in the middle. So that price is probably too high, but increasing it to $60, $75, the APCHA staff was going to return to the board and give them a suggestion on where that fee might land that would make up for the revenue lost on the capital improvement fee and the bid fee.
And I realize I may be asking more detail than was in this discussion, but there would still be a review of the submittal of the capital improvements that are going to be made?
Yes, by staff.
By staff, yeah. Yeah. And this is just a, you know, a step away from, again, this. But it's always been something that they wanted to make sure before someone starts a project that those items will qualify for their capital improvement allowance and/or that they're not, you know, overdoing or gold plating, so to speak. You know, everyone wants quality materials, quality construction and, you know, improving the livability of a unit. But I just wanted to make sure that the, these were actually still going to be reviewed at some level with a, yes, go forward with, you know, your improved bathroom fixtures, your kitchen remodel, whatever it might be. It's not that the, that we're no longer looking at that.
Yeah. That didn't come up. So I believe that it remains the same. And then number six, when we get there, also addresses capital improvement.
Okay.
Caps as well.
Great.
So everyone is okay on four. Number five, right sizing. So this would, right sizing is the idea of swapping units within the system. So theoretically, someone in a three-bedroom unit could swap with someone in a one-bedroom unit. Currently, there are categories. It's one up and one down from this. And this would remove the category limitations because I don't think the program is gaining as much traction as hoped right now. And they'd like to incentivize or at least remove some barriers again to making it work.
Yeah, if I can chime in. I think there have only been three, three successful right sizings so far. And I think we've been working on this over a year. So, yeah, and in order to make it more attractive, that is the proposed change. I would add that the county supports it with some suggested changes, which I think deserve a listen. They support downsizer to move to any category, but the upsizer into the current category or one above, which don't really understand the full logic behind that. But it would obviously keep from a massive jump between categories. I think that's what we're trying, they're trying to eliminate.
Well, I think it's the concern that people will be able to perhaps get into the initial purchase price, but then not be able to afford the HOA fees and capital improvements, special assessments that a much more expensive unit would entail. The example is, you go back far enough and in the APCHA guidelines, there was no prohibiting someone from a category two income from buying a category four or five. And then later on, they become part of the board of directors who said, "Don't ever increase the HOA fees. We can't improve this. We can't fix this." And I mean, I'm literally one of those people who bought a Hunter Creek category four back in 1988 when there was no issue with that. And, you know, quite honestly, a lot of other residents there because there weren't very many units. And this unit had sat on the market for over a year before anybody had placed any bids on it. I just saw it advertised in the newspaper. Frankly, they were trying to go outside of APCHA to find a buyer. But I think that's why it was probably their concern that people would get in over their heads and not be able to keep their units up. I would have a little bit of an opposite concern. And again, some of these things may be refined further. It's not a dead stop for me. But, you know, the current incomes for category four, two-bedroom with a, you know, earning couple, both is $200,000. And so I'd hate to see our limited number of one-bedrooms be all filled up with people with $200,000 incomes and then not have units for the worker who's only making $36,000 or $40,000 a year to be able to get into this. I think the category ones.
We will get to that though.
Okay.
We're going to be talking about the Aspen Country Inn.
Yeah, I saw that. And but those are not the only lower category units we have.
True.
Those are lower income. But there are category twos and threes spread throughout the community. And it's just a little bit of a concern to make sure we're not depriving others who are in need of those units and would want to, you know, if it becomes an issue, then we'll find out, you know. But you usually have one or two bad examples first to be able to, to know that. But it's something, again, to keep our eye on. Sam, any thoughts?
Honestly, no further comments than what you said. I agree with all that. And, I mean, to reiterate, is like, that would be my great concern is that the reason you do have categor- you do have categories and the reason the previous council didn't let people bid up in Burlingame Phase Three was because we were afraid they couldn't afford them, especially with the HOA fees. So I don't feel like I know everything for this one, but I would really want the APCHA board to address this concern, to make sure that people weren't putting themselves into a financial bind by right sizing and that they were doing it with their eyes wide open and they could afford what they were moving into or out of.
Yeah, I think the affordability standard is that, that cost of your housing should not exceed 30% of your income.
Yeah.
And it's when people, like, are so desperate and, quite honestly, perhaps many people are paying 50% or more of their income for a rental in a non-APCHA unit. So they might think, well, what, what's the difference? But the difference would later be how well the unit is remained for the next sale.
Ideally, some of that would be determined in a loan application too, in lending ability.
Well, you'd think so, but at the other hand, some people can borrow enough money from their parents for the down payment part and qualify for the loan, but then it's the HOA dues that get you.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're getting to the meteor items.
Yeah. Been great so far, okay. Number six, capital improvement amendments. So this, to encourage people to maintain and improve their units, this suggestion is to allow a 10% allowable cap every 10 years. The APCHA board actually suggested decreasing this to five years.
Yeah.
That they wanted to.
I, I actually have a couple ideas on this one that might be able to take back. I am one of those people who's had a unit since 1988, and so there's a couple of different factors at play. One is that should the 10% every 10 years be calculated on the current appreciated value of the unit? I mean, this is, again, would be a hypothetical, but having bought a unit for $64,000, my 10% would be $6,000. You cannot replace a bathroom for $6,000 or remodel a kitchen or anything like that. The appreciated value of my unit, I haven't checked for quite a while, but I imagine it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 200,000. So that would be the question. The, the interesting part is that appreciation on your unit is simple appreciation. So it's that 2% a year of the original price, or 1 and 1/2% a year of the original price, 3% a year maximum of the original price. But the cost of a new stove and inflation on any building materials and supplies, that cost increase is compounded over the years. It went up to 110 this year, next year it's going to go up to 125, you know, whatever it is. And so you have a appreciation cap that's, again, figured on simple appreciation and your, but the cost of the repairs is based on an inflationary value. And so the, the, the question is simply, should it be based on your original purchase price? Or, so I would leave it at the 10-year level, but I would, I would consider basing it on the current appreciated value of the home as opposed to what it is based on simple, you know, the original purchase price from 30 years ago. So that's just a concept to run by. You know, I don't know, we don't have a example of what it would cost to compete with builders who are building on Red Mountain or the people who are available and, you know, the tariff situation seems to really be driving up the price of many of the things people would need to replace. So I would just say, take a look at that. And then the other idea I've had that I think I'd love to have APCHA board toss around on this, is if somebody is selling their unit and someone wants to buy their unit and this person who's selling it never used their, their capital appreciation budget, could the new buyer make that 10% worth of improvements or 5%, whatever's left of that capital improvement budget and add it to the base price? So the, these are upkeep and improvements that were not made by the past owner. They never used their 10% or maybe most of it not used. Could that be added to the base sales price, allow that new owner to make those improvements as they're moving in, and then add it to their base? It's just a hypothetical, I'm sure there's pros and cons of it, but there's a lot of people who are like, "Well, I'm going to sell in a few years, so I'm not going to fix that bathroom. I'm going to sell in a few years, so I'm not..." And somehow, a few years turns into 12 or 15. And, you know, undone, and, you know, for me, it's really about functionality and, again, quality, not aesthetics and, and just cosmetic type of, of things that would allow you to do that. And APCHA does an inspection of the homes as they're being sold, so they have a chance to really evaluate that, I would believe.
Yeah, I concur. And the only other things to add are, is just like, people that live in APCHA ownership units, I don't want them to feel like they have golden handcuffs on.
Right.
I want them to be able to improve their units. Whether, I don't know enough details to know the 10% or every 10 or every 5. I think the points to be concerned about is people should be able to improve upon their units for functionality and livability. And then on the other side, we have to worry about, obviously, the sale price at the end. But at the same time, I care more about making sure the units are livable and habitable and would actually consider buying back down some units if they need the necessary repairs. I know we already have like an essential repairs program, but I'm not so concerned about the numbers or the years as much as I'm concerned about the bottom line, that these units are wonderful to live in and that they can be sold back for a price that people can afford.
Yeah, to- total agreement on that. And, you know, again, it's, it's funny to have to say it this way, but it's like, one couple improves their bathroom and they really liked the 80s ethic of a black toilet and black walls and mirrors and things like this. Well, the next person moves in, that might very well be what you call cosmetic for them to say, "Well, I just can't live with this, I have to do something else." So APCHA has to always determine that fine line between whether this is functionality, this is livability, or is this cosmetic? And I, I, I don't know what that fine line is. The Hunter Creek units all have what you would call the popcorn ceilings from original, and a lot of people paid to smooth those out, maybe even putting up a little molding and make their place look great. So I don't know whether, what, how APCHA would have looked at that type of improvement. I, I never did it myself, but there is that line between aesthetics and cosmetics versus functionality and livability. And it's, it's a price of matter.
And like most things in life, I just feel like this one would be a good for some sort of appeals process. I, I don't know if that, no, you don't think any appeals ever?
They do not want to create...
You want fine lines, like it either, it's black and white, there's no, there's no like, the mine situation is different?
You know, they used to have special review at APCHA and suddenly every, every dispute was a special review.
I can see how that would get into special, preferential treatment for one and not the other, but I don't, I don't know. To the point what you said, I just feel like there's so much nuance that I wouldn't know how to grade some of this stuff.
And, and these are things for these guys to take back to the board, to, for the, the whole board to consider and, and take a look at. I, I agree with what you're saying. There may literally become a point at which some of the units need to be bought back down if we're really going to fulfill any sort of copacetic or parity with where the workforce is, you know, what workforce is really earning. You know, given enough time, everything would gravitate to a category five, you know, in, in our times. So that, those were my thoughts on, on capital reserves. Does anybody else have any other thoughts? Oh, I know, there is one more for the APCHA board to begin considering, and it has been brought up before. When you're talking about larger capital improvements to a whole complex, you know, a lot of this is focused interior to a unit. I don't know that re-roofing a condo is something that you can add on or replacing the boilers, maybe that's just standard maintenance. But sometimes we see kind of exceptional work or problems occurring, and people have asked before, is, is there, you know, larger whole complex? It could be even single-family homes or, or a modular, where we've got to replace the entire sewer lines and water lines. Or should, should anything that is outside of the unit for multi-families be considered eligible for a capital reserve? Do you type so fast? Okay. And now we get to lottery chances.
Currently, there is a tiered structure for how many chances an applicant gets in the lottery. Incrementally, I think it increases every four years and rewards people who have longer work histories in Peking County by providing more chances. I believe it goes all the way up to nine. And someone in the four to eight, four to eight-year work history has one or two. I think one, is it, do you guys?
Actually, that, that was on the larger guidelines page, and I think that it's zero to four.
One, and then it goes to two.
It goes one and four to, to 12 years or something like that goes, all of a sudden jumps to five. And I think the county raised some concerns with this aspect as well.
They did.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, I...
Yeah, so they're, they're, they proposed eliminating all tiers and streamlining it to every applicant, no matter how long your work history is, that you get one bid or one chance.
Yeah. I, I think I can see changing this policy. I, I appreciated the numbers that were in the packet about changing the average age closer to typical Aspen homeowners or national standards of first-time home purchases. On the other hand, you know, a lot of people may not have saved enough to even try to enter a lottery until after they've worked here for 15 years or be in a position where a job allows them to do that. And they've either been battling the commute or battling free market rents or things like that. But I do think the system could be greatly simplified to not give quite as much of an advantage. You know, maybe it's, you know, you qualified with your, up to four years, you get one chance, you know, four to 10, you get two chances, 10 to 20 years, you get three chances. But, you know, it, it, right now, if you were at that maximum of more than 20, I think you'd get 12 chances. And that does seem to bias it way, way too much to me. So I'm not sure I would feel like you need to throw out and go simply to, everyone only gets one, no matter what, but not, maybe have this spread be as wide as it is, that you can get up to, to 12 chances.
I've got to say, I've heard a lot, gotten a lot of feedback from the community on this. And most people want it left as is, don't want to touch it. Now, obviously, there's an issue, and as the data shows, our applicants are older than the surrounding average of the three counties around us. I'd like to do something about that, but I think this is a little drastic. So I'd like to take this back to APCHA for more discussion.
Yeah.
I was curious, how, how did this vote go the first time around? Like, who were the, how many detractors, how many people were for it? It was just a first reading?
This one did not get any consensus either way. We requested more information on how that modeling actually works and some of the stats around lottery chances. There was a sense that you actually have diminishing returns after a certain, like, six is, nine is no better than six at some point, or it's really very small. So the board was looking for more information on this for second reading. And part of that was, they wanted the city of Aspen and the board of county commissioners to weigh in on their constituents. That was really important to the board as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so without any solutions, I think keeping as is makes a lot of sense. I also heard from many members of this community who felt like they had earned their dues. But at the same time, it, we, we have a workforce that is older than apparently this is trying to solve for, so I say with no solutions. If there's a way to try to get younger people and younger families into our workforce, that's wonderful, but doing it against the people that have paid their dues is probably not the way to do it. And you, we saw that sort of level of outrage, sort of, I actually even said, "It's one of the beauties of having local papers when they report on things and you actually do get feedback from something like that." And I never saw anyone very excited about this, only a lot of angry people. And sometimes there, there's like an angry minority, but in this case, I, I highly doubt that, especially since I think most of our community that is in, or a good chunk of our community that's in APCHA housing, paid their dues and got in from paying their dues and finding ways to live here longer that have maybe been creative. So if we can get younger people into our housing, that'd be wonderful, but probably not this way.
Yeah, I, I, I think we've all gotten some feedback on this, and I think that if, if this item is just dropped from second reading and, and taken to its own further investigation and, and see if it should be left alone or not, but it would, it would stay in as is right now until they had further discussion and analysis. And, again, the only thing I can suggest that seemed to be worth looking at is to simplify the chances. There's no reason for them to go all the way up to 12 to one. You know, if, if somebody has two chances and one other person has one chance, you already have a 50% higher chance.
Yeah.
You know, and, and so you can still reward the time without it having to be this, this massive a spread, I think, is, is the way I look at it. The other thing that one person brought up to me, which I think deserves some look at in this, is the lottery chances that are given and the credit that's given to someone who was raised here. And they had created something because someone who was raised here, went to Aspen High School, then maybe went off to college, comes back, they're 24, and it's their town, but they, they're, they're treated as if they have no work history and they have no chance at all, until they've been able to live in their parents' garage for, for four years. So how does this policy play, or any change to this policy play to the kind of continual living community, the desires that are expressed repeatedly in the Aspen area community plan for a sustainable community from generation to generation?
And I'll, I'll add that, I don't think this is a perfect solution, but when we talk about right sizing, I think one of the important things in my mind of the APCHA program is to allow families to live here and to move into those sizable units. Obviously, the main point of right sizing, but like, when we talk about something like this and work history, it's just like, if they're going to be close to retirement and moving into some of these places, hopefully, we can perfect right sizing so they allow families to move into some of these three-plus-bedroom places to make the system work better in that regard, because that really is bedrock of community.
Well, the, the right sizing would, for the larger unit, would absolutely have to be both qualified by income, you know, one up from their current income at the most, and a tenant in each bedroom, occupied bedroom.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got some comments on that, and I think, again, just kind of letting the other good changes go forward and some just needed a little more time to cook.
Good feedback on that. The next one addresses qualification. Apparently, historically, the amount of time, your work history as a retiree or someone who is disabled was aligned. Recently, APCHA updated that regulation so that a person had to work at least 10 years in Peking County before they could move into APCHA or retire in APCHA housing. And this is intending to bring the dis...
Are you on number eight?
Yes.
Okay.
The, intending to bring the qualified disabled employee requirement into alignment with this. Currently, they have a minimum of four consecutive years immediately preceding the disability, and APCHA has requested to increase this to 10.
I have some problems with this one, and I think that you got some feedback from the county to discuss first.
The county gave us feedback on all this stuff, but the county wants to leave this as four years. Do not want to change it to 10.
I, I have a challenge with this, just, and perhaps because I sat on the county board and they also do health... and they also do Health and Human Services and are along those lines. But the idea that you could have someone who, who has worked here for three years, gets hit by a car on Main Street, is disabled and unable to work, and then the community says, bye-bye, you know, you're out of here. You know, you have to have worked here 10 years first. We don't know where you're going or what you're gonna do. That, that just doesn't feel right. And I think it's, it's, it's not something that probably comes into play that often. And I also, you know, I've known people over time who've been disabled and they may be disabled for a year and a half or longer in recovery. And then they are able to work again, you know? And being in the community, part of that is, is a healing process. And recoveries can be long and painful and multiple surgeries, multiple activities. And so I don't want to cut the fuse short, so to speak, that, oh, you only worked here three years and your recovery's gonna take two years, so you're out of here. You know, it just doesn't, it doesn't feel holistic to me.
I would say I have a couple acquaintances that would be in a different situation if these policies were in place now, rather than when they became disabled.
Yeah.
Because they would be gone. So, yeah, I'm, obviously, would like to leave this the way it is.
My question is, when and how did these become out of alignment? Was it four years for both at one point? Like, it was four years for both?
Four years for both.
So one increased to 10, the other remained at four. I imagine that conversation had been at the points that Mayor Richards just brought up, is why it was left at four and not moved to 10. So I think this is one of those, like, unfortunate circumstances, sort of things. So I don't see any reason to change it. I think it was changed to this for a reason.
Yeah. You know, and things like disability insurance that people get through working with Social Security or perhaps Workman's Comp and other programs, it's up to them to determine whether someone is scamming the system and you, you actually could be working now, but you're just choosing not to, you know? And I don't think that that really is the APCHA role to shut the door on the housing. If, if there becomes a questionable case, then I think that they, you know, should have the authority to check with appropriate agencies that, that look at, you know, is this, is this someone stringing us along or is this an honest disability?
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
Okay, thank you. Next one is the removal of the six month leave of absence for retirees. This is called the Caribbean rotation or Caribbean shuffle.
According to one of our journalists, I guess.
And according to the APCHA board, currently, you can take six months of leave every year. And this update is designed or suggested to people in workforce housing more of the year. And so it would, it would be the same leave of absence. So you can get two leave of absences totaling no more than 24 months over a 10-year period.
I don't mean to speak first, but I was the one, I was on a, either APCHA board or a city council when this policy was put in place. And I remember the room being filled with a number of seniors who were saying that, you know, hey, these winters are hard and cold on us and I want to visit my family. My kids couldn't afford to live in the valley, so they live somewhere else and so on. And there seemed to be a requirement that you had to lease your unit while you were gone. And I just see this as a little bit counterintuitive and maybe contradictory to the APCHA goals of housing a workforce. Because I'd rather not say, oh, we'd rather have a senior living in here of 12 months a year who doesn't work than a senior who's making their available, unit available for work or for six months. And so what was missing for me in understanding this was, has this been a problem? That this, these seniors taking a leave of absence are not renting their units? You know, has that been, has that been the issue? And there's, or how many of these leave of absences are happening a year? But the APCHA has a policy that you need to rent a unit, you have to give them at least a six-month lease so that people aren't kicked out in the middle of January in the snow. And so this policy would make it impossible to legally rent your unit to someone for three months while you were gone. And so that, again, it seems just kind of counterproductive to the goals. And then the other thing that's a little interesting side note, because I am a detail nerd person, is that we have a challenge with our rental units in that when they're advertised at Truscott or any other APCHA managed rental, your longest work history who applies in the period while it's posted, which is about 10 days or a week and 10 days, something like that, they get the unit. So the longest work history who applies for a unit, who qualifies otherwise, gets the rental unit at Truscott, gets the rental somewhere else. Whereas if somebody who is an APCHA owner is renting their home while there are going to be a wave, whether it's four months, six months, whatever, I guess it has to be six months to be a legal lease, they can pick the tenant. And so they are picking who's going to go into their private home. So they could work with the ski company or auto mechanic or someone else to say, yeah, if you want to bring someone new in who has no work history but is going to be working here, that's like the only avenue for that person with no work history to be brought in, whether it's a IT tech specialist company needs or, again, any sort of thing. So I think this program has had benefits that are not really noted here. And for me, again, it just, it has a subtle feeling of, we'd like to make it more difficult so maybe some of these people will sell their units sooner and move out. And I don't think that that's a good policy to have. You hear, you know, on the street of, oh, well, they bought a home somewhere else, you know? And, well, we got a couple of things going on. One, we've excluded all these people from even trying to buy a home they could retire down to and rifle. It's in our exclusion zone. They, they could have bought a home in Glenwood maybe, but no, they can't, you know? So, so that, we've, we've made this whole area, which is now totally unaffordable for people to take, or most people. Maybe this doesn't apply to RO homes and higher category units, but for the majority of our workforce in twos and threes, they cannot relocate on what they have to Carbondale anymore, you know? So I think that there needs to be some serious oversight of this and make sure that people are really leasing the unit while they're gone. That, that would be the number one thing. On the flip side of that, I look at this and ask myself, what is the enforcement policy? You know, are we gonna put ankle bracelets on seniors and make sure they're back in 90 days? Or, you know, it just, it becomes a little, little confusing to think about. We don't ask everyone, where were you, you know, or have a neighbor reward program for saying, I think they were gone for four months, you know? You know, what, what is the real enforcement? And it would be, be doing extra enforcement on seniors that we're not doing on other people. So this legitimized a real need. It gave people flexibility. I don't see any, any, again, metrics that have told me that, well, these people aren't really renting their units. And I do think that that is a hard and fast requirement.
I think if you apply for a leave of absence, I do think you rent your unit, but, and there is some concern that people just aren't applying at all and doing this.
Aren't applying at all.
Yeah. And that's more of community watch.
That becomes a separate issue of not following the guidelines as opposed to changing the guidelines. And there's an old, old cliche in politics that bad cases make for bad law. And I don't want to punish everyone who's out there just so there's a few people who we get. And there may be other ways to get those people. And I was looking through some of our older Aspen area community plans and the projection on, in the 2012 plan was that by this year, we'd be facing over 800 units occupied by seniors. I don't think our numbers are near that. I think they're less than half of that. And in my own lifetime, I've seen, unfortunately, neighbors pass away. I've seen a neighbor who met their old boyfriend at a high school class reunion and decided to move back with them. I've known a lot of people who've had to move away because they can't breathe at the high altitude levels anymore. And, you know, there's enough factors, or they want to be closer to their kids who moved to Florida because they couldn't afford to buy in our valley, that, that seniors do agree to move. And maybe helping them move is something that we should all consider. But I don't think that change of policy is, is the right step.
I agree with everything you said. I also, when this first, when I first read about this, I thought, what, what harm is this doing? And after looking at it a little closer, I, I don't think there is any harm being done. There might be a couple of people that are outside of compliance. And again, if people are leaving their units empty for six months out of the year, then that is an issue and we, there should be compliance on that. But as far as reducing the amount of time, you can leave your unit, rent your unit out while you're gone, I don't think that's a positive way forward. I think leaving it at six months allows for more long-term rentals.
Yeah.
So, and I would also add that the county commissioners want to leave that as is.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I worry more about compliance than anything. But like, once again, same with John, I don't see the harm so long as these units are being rented out to workers. I do think it's like a symbiotic relationship, which is what I always look for, that our retirees and our community members get to stay where they're at. And we get a workforce when they don't want to be here, don't, are just not here. I'm not sure of six months. I'm not sure how beholden I feel to the timeframe, except long-term is obviously nicer. I guess they probably shouldn't be renting more than that because they wouldn't be living here, so.
They wouldn't be a resident.
Yeah, they wouldn't be a resident, so there's that. And then, I don't think I need, again, to like the nuance of whether they need to do like winter six months or summer six months. I think there'd be an awkwardness, though, if they were renting it out in the off-seasons. But if there's a worker requirement, there's a worker requirement. So hopefully, people are, especially retirees, are not taking advantage of this program to do anything nefarious. I don't think they are. And I think, like any retiree in a three-plus bedroom, these are good candidates to go to for asking a lot of voluntary survey questions of, what would you like? If you wanted to move, what would you need? If you wanted to right-size, what would it take? And like, no one's forcing you to do anything. These are your survey participants to see what would make them happy, honestly, and be best for the program.
Yeah, I think that, you know, there should be perhaps more stringent standards on the upfront side of getting a leave of absence, such as turning in a signed lease with the qualified tenants who would be there. If people aren't turning in a signed lease, you know, then they're not really renting the unit. And, and that's kind of, would be a big part of it. You know, and I think there's oddly enough, some strange benefits of letting a senior travel like that because they might find a place they want to move to. They might spend more time with their kids or their family or older friends and decide, I really could live here. But the last thing I want is people to leave and then come back and say, oh, by the way, it never really worked out where I lived there and now I'm invoking my work history to live in somewhere else after I gave up my unit, you know? So I do, I do think that this, I would leave it as is. But again, more enforcement, more compliance.
To that point, and I'm sure you could speak about this, they're not exactly related, but like, when they put in like allowance of ADUs here and how people built those for nefarious reasons, just to add square footage, thinking they would house workers. I would add, just beyond a lease, that I would consider other proof that they are being, housing workers. And I would even consider potentially local pay stubs each month or every other week because I can see someone signing a lease. I just-
No, no, you're right.
I just want to like trust but verify when it comes to something like this. Because if someone's doing the right thing, these should not be difficult to produce. But if they're doing the wrong thing and you're like, you can't produce a pay stub of someone that you're renting to that's supposed to be a worker, I would be, what's up with that? So.
That, that's a great, great follow-up compliance, basically, of some form. I don't, I don't think it's every two weeks, but, you know, we, you know, we'll let, we'll let the powers that be think, think that one through a little bit more. But I really just can't see moving that to that level.
Yeah.
Great.
Especially without any stats about how often it even happens. And the other thing, just so we all know, the leave of absence program was invented in some ways for people who were going to go back to college, you know, or get higher education and, you know, take care of a sick relative. That's why it is available to people other than seniors as well.
That makes sense. Next one is to reduce the amount of qualified work hours. So Aspen Country and backstory on this, has nine vacant units right now because they cannot qualify anyone due to income levels to occupy those. APCHA would like to reduce the amount of qualified work hours to 1,000 to hopefully move some people into those units.
And even more backstory is that the low-income tax credits were used to create the country and housing. And unfortunately, those standards have not been raised by the HUD or whoever administers those at this point. And basic work hours in this town at $20 an hour will put most occupants over, over that limit very quickly. They would be eligible, perhaps if it's a, a single parent with a child and a dependent, you know, type situation, but that's, and I'm glad they're available for those individuals. But it's, it's just something we've talked to our senators about changing that, we've written to people about changing that. And it's why those tax credit programs do not work for affordable housing in our community.
And we just need to do something to, I mean, we have empty units.
Yeah, that's unacceptable.
Let's, let's get people in.
Yeah. I was gonna say, if the choice is between having the units empty or making the qualifications work for someone, I'd rather make the qualifications work for someone. There really is not a good excuse to have empty units anywhere in this town. They should be filled. There's plenty of people that want them.
I agree with that. So what is our next?
Final, final proposal or final regulation update.
Okay.
Staff is suggesting that categories be waived for employer-owned units. They're hearing from employers in town. It's hard to qualify people to, to live in designated categories. And so they have units that are sitting empty, presumably because people are either, I think more often was they're earning too much at this point. And so this would eliminate the category requirement.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with this. If people are living in employee, employer-owned units, they're fulfilling the purpose. And that's very bottom line for me. Them needing to qualify doesn't necessarily make sense for me because they're fulfilling the purpose of the unit anyway. And it's not like they're gonna not be able to afford it. It's what their employer is doing with them. So I, I don't see any issue with.
And they're, they're required to charge, there's a cap on the rent that the employer can charge, so it's not, there's no way for them to make money off of this, which was a concern.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Yeah, that's interesting. And it might be my nature to think about, well, what's the flip side of something? And so I, I don't know that this is a problem or an issue, but I'd hate to have someone who got an approval saying, hey, we're gonna do this really nice 800 square foot unit. It's gonna be for a category three family, you know, we'll do this and they're gonna fulfill these positions in our organization. And then it ends up being rented to just one occupant. And they're actually, you know, executive finance director or something who's making 200,000 a year. And it's more that, you know, I mean, you, some of the, the categories that were asked for out of those employer units were about the balanced community. And so that maybe APCHA and the housing programs weren't picking up just all the category one, two, and three people. And so I just wonder, is there a flip side that, you know, you're gonna have people who now have the higher salary and the more executive or real deeply professional job, and then now they're, they're only having to pay a category two rent? And, I mean, is that, is that become a hiring perk? By the way, we have this great 800 square foot unit for you and you can have it to yourself. And, I mean, they, you know, maybe it's just that they're- And I mean, they, you know, maybe it's just that there's not enough detail in this, that they're having to fulfill all the bedrooms that are in the unit. And you just hate to create a windfall situation where they still need that $20, $25-an-hour employee, but that person's going to live in APCHA because their director's going to live in the unit they built. You know, so that, that's all. I mean, if it's, if it's similar to a country-in situation and they just can't do it because of income levels and people are making 25 bucks an hour now instead of just 18, then, you know, yes, I can absolutely see it. And so it just feels like it's a little bit of a unique dynamic, and I don't want to throw babies out with the bathwater.
I think one of the examples that was given during this was a bank not being able to hire a teller. And they, that's the employee they really need. They already have an executive, and the executive presumably has housing, but they don't have enough staff because they don't meet the category requirements. And so this is in response to some of the issues they were hearing around that from employers.
Yeah, again, maybe there's just should be some guidelines around it that, you know, it's almost like our purchase that they can go up a category, an income, or they could go up two categories, but I don't want them going up to RO category for, you know, going crazy on it. It's just a thought.
I would also add that this obviously is designed just to get units with warm bodies in them.
Oh, yeah.
Which I think is obviously what we're trying to do. The county commissioners supported this, and I would say that the rental rate charged by the employer must be the rental rate required by the category as prescribed. So our bases are covered, but I do think you bring up some important questions about compliance, and is it being abused? And so I would like to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, again, if you got credit for a three-bedroom in your growth management, it should be occupied all three bedrooms, you know, things like that.
I just want to say that employers have incentives to fill these units, so I do think it would be more towards the teller side of things than the other side of things.
Yes.
Because they obviously want a functioning business. So if they're only putting executives in, I don't know what their business is to be functioning at that point. Like, a lot of the people that need the more affordable side of housing are going to be the tellers and others. So I would think this is pseudo-self-regulating because unless something really nefarious is going on, employers should be putting in things to make their business function.
No, I, I agree with you entirely. And as I said, it's always my intuition to say, well, what, how could this? And there's almost any regulation, there's someone, you know, and you'll, you'll see cases over the next couple of years or however long you're on council where something was written this way and someone found a way around it. Or there's somebody found a loophole, or there's something. And so, again, just that the units should still have, have the occupancy that they were, thought they were going to have. And we're cautious about, and maybe that should be a part of the guideline, I don't know, but you know, if it's, if they got credits for a lot of category-ones, they're going to probably be having the same problem the country in is. And they could go up to a category-three employee. But if, if they're going from a one to a five, and we don't have fives anymore, we have ROs, I would think we're making a mistake.
Yeah.
Great. That wraps up the regulation proposals. Thanks. You will report back to APCHA on this. Second reading is scheduled for May 7th.
And I see a couple of members of the public who've come to sit in on this item or on the next item, ma'am, I don't...
This item?
I, I could take public comment, just three minutes, please, and we'll move on to other items. Come on up to the microphone so we can get you on TV.
I loathe doing this. It makes me very nervous.
And make sure the green light is on on the microphone.
Okay.
Great. And just your name and where you're from or whatever.
Okay. I actually wrote something because I knew that I would get nervous. So if I may read it, please. My name is Inga Lark, and I guess, you know, I really appreciate the, all the comments here. And Rachel, I concur with everything you said and greatly appreciate what you said about taking away the right of retirees to lease their units or to, for the leave of absence. But I'll read this quickly. I'm here as a citizen to express my concern about the enormous potential cost to taxpayers from the proposed changes to APCHA's regulations that are under consideration at this time. We all know that when APCHA overreaches its authority, it costs taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's happened in the past. Now APCHA is proposing to do so again. Please protect taxpayers from further waste and targeted members of our community from harm. With its proposed changes to its regulations, APCHA is yet again endeavoring to diminish the rights of hundreds of owners, not just owners, not just the ownership rights of new buyers, but also the terms of ownership for people who have already purchased units. Consequently, APCHA is risking a very expensive class-action lawsuit that can be easily avoided and potentially a scenario whereby we end up having hundreds of people in our housing program over which APCHA has no binding agreements. Surely, it is unlawful to diminish an owner's rights after they purchase a property and thereby diminish the value of ownership, all while maintaining the authority to set the sales price. Surely, it is also unlawful to change the compliance requirements for owners when their ownership is inconvenient, after they've purchased their units. Yet, APCHA is taking the position, yet again, that it can subject owners to any changes it sees fit at any time, even now during the off-season when APCHA, APCHA's board knows full well that many members of our workforce are not here to see what is happening or to voice their concerns. For example, APCHA is aiming to remove the rights of a retiree to a leave of absence. It is as if APCHA is saying, why not create a stumbling block for retirees who need a leave of absence to, say, get medical care, care for a family member? If we take away their leave of absence and they fail, and they are facing a life-or-death situation and need to leave, we can get retirees to sell. I think, I don't think you will get them to sell. I think you will get them to sue. So many people are angry about this. If APCHA thinks its workforce is sufficiently competent and knowledgeable to do important work for this community that affects the safety and well-being of us all, surely, our workforce is smart enough to understand that this is wrong.
Thank you.
And the main, the main thing is this, this premise that you can change an owner's ownership rights after they buy a unit, that you can diminish them. That is likely unlawful, and it's also very menacing. So it creates ongoing anguish and distress. It's as if, it's as if hawks are circling above your head for the people who are in our workforce, who you want them to be able to simply focus on doing a great job for this community with solid ground beneath their feet. But every time you turn around, you hear about another way that APCHA is working to diminish what ownership means.
Thank you. I think the three minutes are up, but, you know, I do have to say, I think the APCHA board is working in good faith and putting things out there for consideration, and this is why we discuss it as thoroughly as we do. You know, I, I look at it as, you know, back in the day, the APCHA board actually was involved with helping decide what lots to buy, how to design units, and actually constructing and building housing. And that was kind of moved away for various reasons. And so they're left with the kind of the role of the rules and compliance and organization and how to fulfill the joint mission of a working workforce for our community and the balance of community concerns. So I don't think there is evil intent as much as they were looking at things like this. I do also believe that current guidelines, when some, excuse me, not guidelines, deed restrictions, when you buy a unit, say that the owner agrees to comply with the APCHA rules as they are updated from time to time.
Can I speak to that?
No, we're not going to go into it. This is just a very abbreviated, it's normally a work session. I don't normally take public comment during that. But you may be right, people would have potentially illegal grounds to sue on that item. I don't know. That it's best avoided for lawsuits, in my mind. But that is kind of what people are made aware of, is that the guidelines may change over time.
We weren't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your time.
I appreciate all of you. Thank you for your work.
If you'd like to speak for a moment?
Have you Tony, who was here?
I, I thought she was here for the pool.
Yeah. Okay. Again. Yep. You know what?
And again, we're just taking very brief comments. But as respect to a former mayor, I'm going to have to do that.
Start the clock. My name is Mick Ireland. I've lived in affordable housing for most of my time here in Aspen. I started work at age seven. I have 68 years of work paying into social security most of the time. In spite of that, and the lucrative job as a public servant, I couldn't afford to take six months off as vacation. It's expensive to live here. This is not an option I'm here to, on personally. My wife lives in Palm Springs. She cares for her aunt. We're apart, and I've always dreamed that I would be able to save up enough money so that I could take off six months, be with her and the aunt and do things, but I can't. I, I oppose this change for a couple of reasons. First of all, it is, if not legally, if not illegal, it's morally unjust to tell somebody who's invested a lifetime in working here, often at low wages, that you can no longer, at age 65 or 75 or 80, take off for six months. As a point of fact by the APCHA's own studies, most of us over 65 work full-time until we're 75. And yet, we can't take this time off. On the legal issue, I would like to note Judge Selden's opinion of what the Picking County Commissioners tried to retroactively change their fees for employee housing impact fee. Retroactively, I have a client that resisted that, and it cost the taxpayers a quarter of a million dollars because the county obstinately insisted that it could retroactively change a prior agreement. And Judge Selden, in no uncertain terms, slapped that down and ordered attorney's fees. The provision in my deed restriction doesn't say anything about amending regulations from time to time because there was no regular, set of regulations in place at the time that could be amended to be used against me later. That's pretty lame. People, this all smacks of an attempt to pressure people to sell their units. Imagine, imagine if you had to go to Mount Sinai or to Minnesota or some famous clinic to treat your cancer for eight months, and APCHA said to you, oh, that's fine, you can sell your house because you're going to be gone more than six months. And that's in violation of your deed restriction. Yet that, that is patently available to APCHA under this proposal. See ya, wouldn't want to be ya, sell your house, hit the road. And this is not hypothetical. This happens to people. People have to go for extended care. That's the nature of cancer and some other diseases. And we're saying, thank you for your 40 years of service here. You can sell your house and move along. I don't appreciate that. I think it's inhumane. And whether you could legally jam that down our throats is irrelevant to the moral issue of telling somebody after years of service, and I think I put in my 40 years here, 44 years, of service. And I, I think that if I were, had an illness, I ought to be able to go and have it treated without selling my house and taking whatever meager proceeds and going renting in some big city for a few months and then joining the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your comments.
Thanks.
Okay, we have finished this item, but we are able to see how, how many and how severely people are affected by being able to live in subsidized housing and live in a community where free-market housing is simply not available to them. So there's a balance of real challenging issues here that we are facing. And I, I do not ascribe evil intent to any, the Housing Board or Housing Administration for trying to look at programs like this. I just disagree with the outcome, and I disagree with the programs in some of the suggestions. Other items that they are cleaning up and improving, I think are certainly an improvement to the program. So there we have it. What's our next agenda item here, Pete?
I think this was a little bit of time for the council members to just talk amongst themselves and share some of their visions for what they want to do in the next few years, what topics were most important to them, and kind of tee up some conversation around how do we head into the retreat.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I tried to send a email out on Sunday. I was away at the Club 20 meeting in Grand Junction on Friday and Saturday, so sorry if I got that to you a little late. But I was asked, when I first was elected with Pete, to start looking at future agendas. And they had some things already queued up, and I said, well, you know, it'd probably be nice for us all to get to know each other a little bit more and hear from Sam and Bill, what they would hope to see in their next two years, what would have been some highlights. And, but, but more of a, a community getting to know each other a little bit so we can understand each other's points of view sometimes when we look at issues. And so it's nothing, no deep dive personally if you don't want, but anything you care to share. I did suggest some potential questions. What do you really love about Aspen? What, what makes a community special? Anything like that. So I realize this might be a little out of the norm, but we are a new council, and I'm just hoping we can gel. Do you want to start, Sam? You feel okay? And we can go back and forth. You don't have to do it as a monologue.
Sure. I mean, I did write up some at least notes, answers, because I know I'll miss some, but I'm going to go through your list of questions as far as, in a short answer, but you said, why did I come to Aspen and what made me stick? What do you love about living in the Aspen and Roaring Fork Valley? Well, I went to the University of Denver, and then I worked at Jewish Summer Camp where I met one of the camp mothers who's very philanthropic, and she invited me to live with her and her family for a couple of years. So I moved in not knowing how long I would stay here, but always wanting to live in the mountains, and I fell in love immediately with this place. Some of the answers are obvious to me, but the answer I came up with here is, I always described Aspen to be like summer camp itself. I feel like there's a bunch of electives to sign up for, there's so many activities, and there's so many things to get involved with, and it's the most beautiful place on earth. So I'm just like enamored by it, and I just think it's like the things you can do here in such a small town, having grown up in a small town, really, just, they're so special each and every day. That's my really short answer. And I, I'll go too and bounce around, but we talked about things that we're hoping to accomplish in the next two or four years. These are the least highlights, but I know I'm missing things because as much as I try to keep organized, there's always issues that I forget because we have so many of them. In no particular order, but I wrote, solving the little problems that are big, big problems for people that ask for your help. At least, things that make me very proud are fixing potholes and plowing roads. And I always think success for us sometimes is when people don't notice us because we're doing such a good job. So, but also when people do come to us and they ask for things, I'll be as vague as that, being able to tell them, yes, let me help you accomplish this, or no, this is why it cannot happen. I think that's the most beautiful thing about local politics and being on city council, at least for me. And like, the little things are the big things to people because this politics is right in front of your face, even more so than national, but obviously that bogs us down a ton, too. As far as like particular issues that I wrote about, a lot of them are like no surprise and are the big-ticket items, but at least in the next two years, I would love to see... and are the big-ticket items, but at least in the next two years, I would love to see the groundbreaking on the Armory Food Hall. I'm hoping that we can get moving on that. Affordable food and beverage is something that this community lacks. We just saw in the paper the other day, reminding us about Micolos closing, and I think it just goes to show how big of an opportunity and expectation the Armory is regarding what it can be for this community. Increased housing, including finalized plan for the lumberyard. I know we're still waiting for the RFP to come back on the lumberyard, but that is a big deal to me, to have at least a minimum, the timeline of the expectation of when all three buildings are getting built and when people will start moving in. So, that'll be a very proud accomplishment, even with all the other, I'll just say, issues that it provides as far as the other things we're trying to solve when it comes to congestion. I'd love to see us solving some congestion issues now. I know in the Jacobs Report and in other, there are things that we could be doing right now to help solve congestion, and I think that would be an amazing thing to get working on and make those improvements as we can, as quickly as possible. I wrote, "New EIS, or at least a concrete plan for the future of the bridge." Once again, like, whatever the will of this council is and the majority is, especially on June twenty-fourth, I will be excited to be part of a council that at least moves this forward with a concrete plan towards the conclusion of this. I say that, which is kind of like wishful thinking, because people always throw roadblocks when it comes to this issue, but I'd be very proud if we made a decision on this, once again, whatever the consensus is of the council. Increased childcare capacity is another thing that I wrote, a shared goal with others on council, and I do think, it's funny, it's like not selfish for me, even though I'll get into the being a parent age at some point, but I just think the quality of life of the family, community members is very important to me, because I think it creates continuity, allows people to stay together. They always say, "It takes a village to raise a child," and I think it's really nice when this community can flourish with all demographics, age-wise especially. And I know childcare is one of those biggest inhibitors to being able to stay, quality of life, and it's really one of those things, I, sorry, huge monologue, but I, there are people that steal phrases, and one of them that I really get annoyed with is RH Hardware, and them talking about the Restoration Hardware ecosystem, because I always want to talk about the Aspen ecosystem, and I think there are so many things that are interrelated with these issues that do create enhancement in the Aspen ecosystem. If both parents can work if they want to, and childcare is affordable, it's like amazing, the domino effect that can have towards the positives that this community can have. They can volunteer more, they can spend more time with their kids, like, it's really impressive. That's just one example. I talk about pragmatic environmental initiatives. I know we do just about everything we can in the space of environment, but like, I wrote pragmatic, because like, at least one issue that's come up a bunch in the last two years is like space heaters, and that's just one example, but I know there's a bunch more, but as far as just like, us as Aspen, a community with money and one dedicated to the climate, I always thought we should be the example of what other communities could be when it comes to the environment. So, if we're able to help come up with alternatives to some of these non-environmentally friendly things like space heaters and whatnot, like, I think that would go a long way towards the trickle-down effect to other communities, but also just for us, and I think it's important to work with our like business partners and others, so that the environment is economically incentivized, because that's usually the reason why people don't always do the right thing, is because of economics when it comes to the environment. So, I think we need to put a lot more money where our mouth is. I'll bring up again, because I'm still stewing on it, when we talked about like our budget and our investments, wondering if we should be investing in more environmental initiatives, because I think a lot of times, there's only so many things you can do as a small community, but if we invest in products or services that are environmentally friendly, I think that would be not just virtue signaling, but value signaling towards the betterment for our entire planet, and I think that's something that we could potentially do with the money we have invested. Sorry, just two more real quick, even though there's always more. More tangible wins that our community can see, feel, experience. You know, a lot of the things we do go unnoticed. I always think it's like funny, reading Ann Mullins's email every Sunday night of what the council did that week, and I'm just like, "Thank you for doing this," because I don't think people realize, like, all the things we do on the consent calendar and the things we approve and all this sort of thing, but at the same time, I really appreciate like the Island Courts and the New Marin Creek Trail, and something that we can point to, and people can see, like, the Armory and experience, and be like, "We helped to do that." Those tangible wins that you can see and feel mean a lot to me. And then, I won't get into detail, because they are what they are, but issues we have talked about in executive session. I'm very passionate about like finally closing up some of these things for the betterment of our community, because those issues especially seem to drag, a lot of them for good reason, but still, I'll just say it vaguely, because they're executive session, you know what I'm talking about.
Bringing issues. That's a really, can tell you put a lot of thought into that, Sam. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I know I've forgotten many, but that is what it is for now.
It was just a spur, you know, I ask people, "What's your approach to problem-solving," or "What kind of demands on your time do you have, other than council?" I mean, it was just really for us to talk about anything that we'd like to, and again, get to know each other a little better.
We can come back. I wrote all that stuff, too.
Yeah, no, no, you didn't have to. I'm sure we have other things to talk about, too. You want to go next, John, or Christine, either one?
Go ahead.
I'll take it away. I was going to keep my comments short, but I may not now. The reason I came to Aspen and what made me stay, I followed my family here, and my family, and this community are the reasons I stayed here. There's no other community like this. What do I love about living here? Everything. What do I hope to get out of, accomplish over the next two to four years? Like to see the lumberyard begun and possibly completed by the time I'm out of office. Twenty-twenty-nine is not that far off. Like to see transit improved, public transit, especially between downtown and the airport, with the airport being redeveloped very shortly, and our entrance to Aspen being talked about, hopefully moving on that very shortly as well. I think childcare, we've actually made some pretty big strides. There are several places where childcare facilities may or may not be built, depending on demand, and where Kids First is currently working on how much demand is actually out there. I continue to be very passionate about the environment. As Sam pointed out, open flames really, I think, send the wrong message to the world about who we are as a community. It disturbs me to see open flames at Gorsuch House on sunny days, or at the Sun Deck, or going twenty-four hours a day, apparently, at the New Molly Lodge, and restaurants too numerous to count. There are grants available through our very own local nonprofit core, which can help line people or businesses up with grants to electrify your outdoor spaces. So, there are solutions out there for people who are willing to think outside the box. As far as the Armory goes, I have cautious optimism about that. I would like to keep that ball rolling, but I have a lot of questions about where the Armory is going. What does community mean to me? It means we all support each other. Programs like APCHA, I think, proves how much this community cares about itself and its own resilience. Without Appsha, without the housing we have, we wouldn't have the community that's here I guess I'll just end on my pastimes and hobbies. I really like reading, I love skiing, I like riding my bike, and spending time with friends and family.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. Christine?
I moved here almost twenty years ago to be a reporter for the Aspen Daily News. I still work in journalism. I edit Local Magazine as one of the many things that occupy my time when I'm not reading council packets, as you eloquently asked. I moved here, I love the mountains, I moved here to be in the mountains, and that's where I love to spend my time. But the thing that kept me here is the community, which I'm glad you asked about in one of the follow-up questions. I think that community, showing up for each other is a good way to describe it, but it's a shared sense of goals and pride and social network, that you're all in it together, and I think that we have that here, and that's really what allowed me to stay, and also incentivized me to stay, is the community. Some of the things that I'd like to work on in the next few years, you've all heard this in the campaign, but childcare, we have an incredible Kids First program, we have money to address childcare, and I'd like to just open the conversation about the affordability and accessibility, and make sure that is being, that we are continually raising the bar on that program to make sure that everyone is taking advantage of the childcare opportunities that we do have here. I've had specific examples on that, and I think we'll take them to the retreat, but I have ideas on this. Another one is community spaces. We have lost a considerable amount of these in recent years, this idea of where you spontaneously run into people and have conversations about, you know, the soccer game that your kids played in, or policy conversations about those that affect all the residents here, and I would like to have a conversation about how we can incentivize, subsidize, increase community space, and maybe it's community events as well, to create more of those interactions, so that people feel more pride in this town. Another one is the mix of retail and chain stores. I hear a lot of concerns and complaints about the direction that retail is heading in downtown Aspen, the makeup of it currently, the lack of affordable retail and restaurant operations downtown, so I'd like to look at that as a council. And then, I'm glad you brought up congestion as well. I'll be sitting on the Transportation Coalition, and what we saw during the campaign is that people really want solutions for the entrance to Aspen, and that parallels congestion, because whatever happens with the entrance to Aspen is not a traffic solution, it's not a congestion solution, so I want to make sure that we are working on that in concert with entrance to Aspen and impacting people's lives positively in that area.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Wait, I really appreciate everyone kind of sharing, and I know some people just went through a campaign, it may feel a little repetitive of what type of things. I guess, for me, I'll give a bit of an example, I was trying to think about it, because I share pretty much all the same things, loving the mountains, and I don't ski the way I used to. I am in meetings more often, and I got a little older, and I got afraid of breaking a leg and then not being able to drive to my Denver meetings, and things like this. But I love how we used to be able to go out and be able to have a drink with someone or have some appetizers with someone, and what didn't cost a full day's wages, you know, and that sort of thing has gotten impossible. I mean, there's a few little happy hours and things like this, and thank you to those restaurants who still do that, or try to find a way to make it good for the locals. Sorry, my screen just blanked out on the questions. But, you know, this weekend, I went down Thursday, drove down Thursday night, and spent Friday and Saturday with the Club Twenty meetings in western Colorado, it was in Grand Junction. Their summer meetings will be in Rount County and in Gunnison. But to become informed about what's going on around me that affects my town has always been important to me, and the potential to build regional coalitions to help solve those problems, because the more insular we are, the less solutions we see, and we need partners. And, you know, it's kind of not like Aspen needs to send a letter supporting this legislation or opposing that legislation or asking for amendments. Aspen needs to bring five other communities with us that will support this legislation, or will oppose this legislation, or support our amendments, and it's how we can get the other names that are involved. And it was interesting, because Jeff Hurd was a keynote speaker for the Saturday morning kickoff of educational programs, and, you know, I was able to ask a question, and I framed it, "That sounds like you're working on a lot of good bipartisan legislation, and this room really appreciates trying to get that water project money back for buying the Shoshone and saving the Colorado River." But turning from that, we all have seen frozen grants that are affecting us, and I brought up that Rafta has a forty million dollars' worth of frozen grants right now. I actually started by saying, "I think everyone in this room has aviation frozen grants, whether it's Montrose or Rount County or these places." And Mr. Hurd, Congressman Hurd, I just said RTA, he said Rafta. "That's important to me, I'm gonna work on that. We want to see that funded, that serves the whole valley," and he seemed fairly familiar with the issue. But having created that one-on-one relationship, and to hear that, or to begin to feel that, I think that's important. And we have issues with Club Twenty that I don't really agree with, in terms of some of the oil and gas and fossil fuel extractive industry, we heard from those panels, and I was able to talk to a couple of the panelists afterwards to say, "You know, I just didn't hear you mention greenhouse gases at all anymore," you know? Were we back to denying this? And, "Oh, no, no, I normally flavor it with more of that, but I didn't," and, you know, but it's a chance to know what legislation's coming down the pike and know how people are making decisions that affect us. And some of those are the forestry acts that are coming down the pike. And a very great conversation at the very end by the state forester, showing some of the tree and fuel mitigation projects that have been done in cooperation under some, I think it's called Good Neighbor Authority, where they have the BLM, working with private landowners, working with Forest Service, to be able to do more of a landscape scale work on fuels reductions and things like this. And then, it also brings home to me, improves my education on things, such as when you hear them repeatedly use the word "mega fires." What we're seeing now are not wildfires, they are mega fires, and how uncontrollable they are. I spoke with some highway experts who work in the industry, and I said, "Well, how long did that last EIS in Durango, La Plata County really take?" I was told, "Six years." He said, "Well, I started working on that project in nineteen ninety-six," and how many different iterations it went through, and he goes, "So, this last loop was probably about four years." But, you know, it's interesting to hear from that, and then, we started talking about wildfires, and he said, "Oh, yeah, and our evacuation time." He goes, "You know, one of the last fires we had up there, they told everyone who couldn't get, you know, they're taking their own car out, but park your other cars down in this dry, brush-free creek bed, there's no shrub, it's gonna be..." He said, "Everything in it was incinerated." Just, you know, that people just don't understand the magnitude of what these wildfires are doing. So, I read a lot, I read all the time, as much as I can. I do love to cook, maybe we'll get some Christmas cookies in here, some things like that. I like to garden when I can, a little spot right outside my little window at the deed-restricted housing. I think we all share a lot of the same goals. For me, Armory is a really important project. I love the design. I do question a little bit of the programming, and, you know, not to totally mirror toys, but how much bar space do you need versus how much space where a family can, who lives in an eight-hundred-square-foot unit, have a birthday party with their kids, without having to pay a restaurant fee to close the restaurant or use half the restaurant? You know, I mean, how do we work those sort of things? And we had a really good discussion about water, and the fellow who spoke, Robert Cicada, owns a farm on the Front Range, and he's been boosted up to a position with the state ag, and he talked about Steamboat trying to support their local fresh-grown, organic food programs, and how they're opening a storefront in their downtown, and it made me think of the Armory. It made me think, "Wow, I wonder if there'd be a space for a year-round farmer's market, one day a week there," you know, doing things like this, and, you know... one day a week there, you know, doing things like this, and, you know, just the creativity that comes from exchange of ideas with other people, and putting our own best minds in history and all these little things we bring with us from our childhood and our parents and our education and the experience we've had here. So to me, the community is Aspen primarily, as what we can be as a municipality, but it's clearly in partnership with Picken County. You know, city residents are county residents, and they're getting ready to renew their healthy community fund, and that takes care of a lot of the same nonprofits that ask us for funding. Where does our workforce come from? You know, I mentioned it with the Aspen Art Museum show for the youth, that it expanded down the I-70 corridor and, you know, throughout the valley, and seeing families who I see working in town come up on a weekend when they're not working to see their kid's art project here. And so they're as much a part of our community, and how do we do those little things, that matters to me a lot, you know, and we've talked about crazy little small ideas, like, you know, could we give prizes away of restaurant certificates to people who use Rafta regularly or part of our free ride program, or do some, you know, things like that to reintegrate our commuting workforce community with our in-town community, and vice versa, you know. So it's the web of life, everything's connected, everything's somewhat tangential, and I'm just really looking forward to working with all you and achieving as many of these goals as possible. So if anybody wants to add anything else or throw anything else out there, came to mind, feel free to do so. My computer keeps blanking out, so I got to re-get back in there, look at the agenda again.
It's telling us something.
Is it meeting time, are we over? Pete wanted to talk a little about future work session topics, or he has a pretty good list, and we'll be talking about some of those things again more at the retreat.
Yeah, I think there'll be some time at retreat for a few of these things. I didn't know if you wanted me to share a little bit of Bill's feedback. He had kind of emailed a few items to the mayor and myself about tonight's meeting. He had a few items for interest going forward. One was kind of continuing on customer service. He said that we've made a lot of progress thus far, that it's improved significantly, but he'd like to now kind of see how we could improve on systems and processes and removing barriers for the community. Had a big interest still in the Armory and kind of continuing that for pushing it forward for a community space. Rafta, looking at this free fare model and the entrance to ridership. Improving traffic and traffic flow, not just waiting until the ETA is resolved. And looks like housing, he had, looking more at trying to create public-private partnerships, perhaps, as a way to incentivize that, not just doing it all from the city lens, I think. One item that Bill had also mentioned, which, just to kind of open up the floor maybe to the rest of council, was how valuable the resource guide was that was created, more so as an onboarding tool for yourself, Christine, and for the mayor, and something that we haven't had in the past, and Jen Uden really pushed that forward to kind of create this new tool that really kind of lays out the framework of what does it mean to be a council member, all from ethics and the process of regular meetings and executive session requirements and everything in between, basically, how do you interact with city staff, communication, everything like that. So Bill was very appreciative of that, which is great. I think Jen did amazing work on creating that document, but if any other council members had feedback for us, we'd love to hear that as well.
Well done, John.
Yeah.
Diane, to Kate.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I think everyone had something to do with that. I had received a hard copy before I was sworn in to be able to see if there were any early edits. I caught a couple of typos and offered a few layout suggestions, but we're going to correct those pages and I'll keep that, you know, I don't need a new reprint, but I just wanted to let all the council know that it's a pretty meaty document when you really get down to it. And if you want hard copies, I think staff is more than willing to make those available as a reference on, you know, how to avoid accidentally having an outside-of-council-meeting meeting. And one member sent back to me an email when I asked a question, and should we all sign on this letter, or how do you feel about it? And they wisely wrote back, I'm responding to you, just not all, so this isn't a meeting. And, you know, that's the type of thing I hadn't thought about, you know, it's like, should we sign on to the CC4CEA letter, you know, as a group? And it's gone back to staff that were signing individually, as I heard from people individually. So, you know, it was really helpful, and it's a good refresher every now and then to take a look at.
I think the only other thing I would mention is, obviously, with some of the feedback we're hearing tonight, it's very helpful to kind of help us gauge how do we schedule the calendar. The mayor and I also met with Kate this afternoon, and so we got some feedback as well. We have to look at staff availability, we have to look at when certain information becomes available, but we'll try to start putting a calendar together that can really reflect where the council wants to focus its time in the near term especially.
Yeah, and we do have the retreat just coming up a little over two weeks from now, and so they'll have a little time to work on the timing of those and their availability. Some things are going to be more timely than others, and we'll try to squeeze everything in, but I think that might be about it for tonight, yeah. Does anybody else have anything else they need to add or ask? Trying to think if there's anything I was supposed to bring forward. I think that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.